So, good evening, everybody, and welcome. I'm calling the March 7th City Council meeting to order. And as a reminder, we continue -- we still continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. So the first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome everyone to join in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. We are going to move into audience comments. This is a time when members of the public may address council in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. And if you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat. And I will look at the city clerk. And do we have anybody with us this evening before I read all the rest?
We do not have any members of the public either in person or online tonight.
So I'll skip the virtual part tonight. And if somebody does, if clerk lets me know somebody's here, I'll go back and read it. And we do not have anyone signed up tonight as well? Okay. So as a reminder for anybody watching tonight, you can always reach out to your city council at any time by emailing them at citycouncil@isicuaqua.gov. Our council leadership team does a fabulous job of responding to your queries. Council President Walsh, do you have any emails that you want to summarize on any of tonight's agenda items?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did not receive any emails on items on the consent calendar, and our regular business is empty, so nothing to summarize.
Thank you. So let's start with committee and regional reports, and we'll go over to Council Member Joe.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Good evening. The February 21st, um, excuse me, Cascade Water Alliance meeting was attended by Council Member Ray, so he'll give the summary of that meeting. March 21st, the CWA's Finance Committee will be meeting. March 22nd, the CWA Board will be meeting. And March 29th, oh, that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Member Joe. Council Member DeMichele?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Council Member Hunt?
Thank you. The Planning, Development, and Environment Committee met on February 28th, and we had one item on the agenda, which was ID 1385 Title 18 Land Use Code Regular City Council Meeting Overview Memo. So this was an item that was about the materials that will be coming back to council at our next committee of the whole meeting, which will be March 13th next week. And the committee discussed the materials that would be presented, and one of the things that came out of that discussion was that we would like a list of items, which was largely based on the work of our Volunteer Planning Policy Commission, that would be items that we specifically wanted to follow up on as both the council and also as the committee. So that list of items that we think will need additional follow-up to add that additional layer of accountability on specific items, that will come back to council at our March 13th meeting, along with all of the work that has gone into Title 18, which is our land use code, which has been a long time coming. So there is documentation of years of public comment, years of commission work, and all of those public meetings and all of those discussions. One other item that we discussed in addition to the materials was we had a discussion about, based on a public comment, about ADU, the code specific to ADUs, and wanting to have additional information about the efficacy of the code that we have in terms of allowing people that are interested in making ADUs have those ADUs, and also, you know, if there are barriers to ADUs, what those would be and what we can do to achieve that, to allow that kind of housing to be built in Isicua for people that want that, as it does meet a lot of our different goals as far as having diversity of housing and other things that we set out to do with Title 18. So that was one additional conversation that we had there. And this will all come back to council shortly, so I won't get too much into the other details. And yeah, look forward to talking with council more at March 13th. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. Two updates today. The Cascade Water Alliance met on February 22nd. There were two agenda items on the agenda, both related to milfoil. We received an update on milfoil in Lake Taps, and we provide approval for a contract with Ocu Technics for up to five years to provide herbicide treatment and control of aquatic vegetation in the Lake Taps reservoir. The next meeting of Cascade Water Alliance will be on March 22nd at the Cascade offices or online. The Mobility and Infrastructure Committee met on February 27th. There were two items on the agenda, ID 1277, the Sewer Master Plan, On-Sites Septic Policy Recommendations, and ID 1386, Public Works Department Resources. The staff presented a plan to extend the city's sewer network to unsewered parts of the city. This would provide an opportunity for residents who would like to connect to the city to connect. The implementation would be done in tiers with environmentally sensitive areas first. Those who wish to remain on their septic systems may do so. There was spirited public comment, both in support of extending the system and against forcing residents to abandon their septic system, which we were not advocating for. There also, there was discussion of additional testing requirements for septic systems in the city every three years, for gravity systems, and every year for pump systems. There are no proposed changes to enforcement, and there is a recommendation to raise the threshold for granting waivers. The committee was supportive of the proposed change to the septic system inspection requirements that require more frequent testing. We had some question about if that made sense with no enforcement, so staff is working on what enforcement it makes sense, so we're going to come back to that one. The proposed tier approach to sewer extension was viewed positively with focusing sewer systems in critical areas and supported the sewer extension of the sewer, extensions with sewer funds to share the cost with the residents. This will provide guidance to the Sewer Master Plan, which then will inform the CIP. The second item we dealt with was ID 1386, Public Works Department Resources. The Public Works Department outlined their staffing challenges and what they're doing to position us to be more effective in public works, and this included realigning assignments, continuing with process improvements, delaying a few projects, hiring external help on a few projects, and adding staff. There were two questions that we were asked to provide guidance on. Does the city council support the addition of requested positions? There were four positions: to complete capital projects, enhance capital programs, and franchise management. And does the committee support the allocation and use of professional services to ensure delivery of projects while public works is completing the recruitment hiring? These changes will come back to the council in the form of a budget amendment. And the next meeting of the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee will be on Tuesday, March 14th at 6:30 here in council chambers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council Member Ray. Just a little push here for the musky fishermen on Lake Taps, which my son is. They don't like your milfoil program. They really like milfoil. Council Member Mertz?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. The Council Surfaces Safety and Parks Committee met on Wednesday, February 22nd at 6:30 p.m. here in chambers. We had two items, ID 1354, City Hall and Isicua Police Access Control Project, which is to improve access to City Hall slash police facility across the street, as well as put fencing around the parking lot. We recommended 3-0 to put that on tonight's consent agenda where it is. And the second issue was ID 1388, Emergency Rental Assistance, which is proposed spending a couple hundred thousand dollars towards emergency rental assistance. And we said 3-0, yes, let's bring it back, but we wanted some supplemental information from the administration on sort of some context on that money and its relationship toward, with the 0.1% sales tax fund that we have, because there's a couple of buckets. And the polls, you know, the two buckets can sort of be treated separately in terms of what they're used for, and we wanted to understand the context of this and also have a conversation on whether 200,000 is the right number. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Council Member Mertz. Deputy Council President?
Thank you. Just a brief report to announce that the next board meeting of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors is this Thursday, March 9th at 4:00 p.m. at our headquarters on Newport Way Northwest. Very short agenda. We'll be doing some discussions around some administrative policies around virtual attendance to meetings and the fire chief performance evaluation. Again, very small, but we'll make sure to report back to you after that meeting. That concludes my report.
Thanks. Council President?
Thank you. On February 23rd, I attended a joint meeting of the Affordable Housing Committee and the Growth Management Planning Committee, which was in person in Kirkland, which was really exciting to have two regional boards in person. This was discussing the countywide planning policies that are related to the housing targets by adjusted median income. And so the Affordable Housing Committee in December handed that off to GMPC. And so the joint meeting was really talking about how did we get there and did the GMPC have any further questions? They asked for amendments, potential amendments, to be proposed by the day following that meeting, and there were none. So it looks like the next step is that it's going to GMPC at the March 22nd meeting for a vote, potentially if they need to extending into their May meeting. But that should be the next steps on that, and then that will really feed into our comprehensive plan. The next meeting for the Affordable Housing Committee is on March 16th. And then on March 2nd, I attended the Growth Management Policy Board. There were three informational items, nothing of substance to vote on, and the next meeting is April 6th. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Council Member Mertz.
Yeah, I apologize. I, despite the fact I had it written down right in front of me, I've neglected to mention that the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting tomorrow night virtually, online, starting at 7:00 p.m. And on the agenda, there's no potential actions scheduled from then, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Member Mertz. Moving on to the mayor's report for this evening, there is an executive session scheduled to discuss pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NI, and property acquisition per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NB. These items are expected to take 1 hour and 15 minutes, and action is anticipated to follow an open session. This is the one-year anniversary of the war in Ukraine that we passed that milestone in the last week. February 24th, 2023, well, let me say, two weeks ago. "February 24th, 2023 marked the one-year anniversary since the beginning of the hostilities in Ukraine. And since then, we as a city have proudly flown the Ukrainian flag at City Hall. On the anniversary of the war, I replaced the original flag with a new one at City Hall. To Ukrainians both near and far, we see your sacrifice, your courage, and your resolve. Isicua stands in solidarity with the brave people of Ukraine who are fighting heroically for freedom and democracy." There is a young artists and authors national competition, so we are calling for all young artists and authors. Please join us in our second annual participation in the Young Artists and Authors Showcase, YAS, a national competition. YAS is an annual art contest that encourages youth worldwide to express the mission of Sister Cities International through original artwork, literature, poetry, photography, and music. This year's theme is Piece by Piece. That's piece, P-E-A-C-E, by piece, P-I-E-C-E. Food Security in My Community. Submissions are due by April 2nd, and to learn more about this process, please visit our site at www.isicuaqua.gov/youthshowcase. And then we have a couple of upcoming events. All Electric Home. The Eastside Climate Partnership is hosting a webinar tomorrow on how to electrify your home. Switching to all electric appliances such as heat pumps and induction stoves can reduce your personal carbon emissions, improve your comfort and indoor air quality, and often reduce your utility bills. A few, pardon me, forgot to turn that off. A few seats remain open, and you can go to kcls.org for more information. Also, transit planning. As we plan for the future of transit in Isicua, we're hosting an open house on March 21st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Tibbetts Creek Manor to gather community input. And the last item I have is the Central Isicua Council Community Listening Session, which is being hosted by our city council. So please stop by the Atlas Apartments Lobby, March 30th, from 6:30 to 8:30, to chat with your city council members and staff on all things Central Isicua. And that concludes the mayor's report. Moving on to the consent calendar. The calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? I am not seeing anyone with, Council President, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you. I moved to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. The motion to approve the consent calendar, is there any council discussion? Hearing none. The motion before the council is to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dang it. Those opposed? That passes unanimously, 7-0. On the regular business portion of our meeting this evening, we have no scheduled items, so we're going to be moving to good of the order before we head into executive session. I have a few upcoming council meetings that I can make, but is there anyone who would like to provide some items? Council President, followed by Council Member DeMichelle?
Thank you. I just had two items that I wanted to make sure to bring up so that you can put stuff on your calendars. First, the mayor had mentioned the March 30th council listening session. We just want to make sure that everybody has that on their calendars. We will talk about that later, but we're looking forward to talking about Central Isicua stuff with residents. And then that morning, the mayor's state of the city is being presented, and so we're all invited, and we'd like to get a head count to see whether or not everybody's going to be able to make the, it's like a morning breakfast that the chamber is being put on, so just make sure that you are responding to the request on that so that we know how many people are going. And that's all I had.
Thank you, Council President. Council Member DeMichelle?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This, this morning, Mayor Pauli and I both attended the first, I believe, of the year public health briefing, and that was hosted by Sound Cities Association. And I did receive the slides that were shown and distributed those. So if you haven't received them yet, you will be receiving them. So I'm just going to give a very quick update. We were introduced to Dr. Faisal Khan, who's the new director of King County Seattle Public Health, and he gave a very informative presentation and listed his top priorities, and he had quite a bit to say about each one, but I'll be very brief. Climate change, the fact that Puget Sound had the worst air quality in the world for three days last summer, put that at the top of his priorities for the coming year. Overdose reduction. We continue to see doubling sometimes of the overdose death rate in King County. Seattle King County Public Health is taking a harm reduction and compassionate, non-judgment approach to seeing if they can reduce the number of overdoses. Homelessness, he talked about they're going to focus on changing policies and structures that enable homelessness, and then, of course, providing as much long-term health as they can to those who are experiencing homelessness. Number four on his list was preventing gun violence, and he talked about the fact that that has been increasing in King County. And again, they're taking a public health approach to solving this, trying not to get involved in the political counterwins on gun violence, but simply addressing how we can reduce the number of gunshot wounds and deaths that occur in King County. They're going to focus on safe storage laws, making firearms less accessible, and then mental health, mental health resources for those people who are in crisis or contemplating suicide. He talked about racism as a public health crisis, and that is something that they're going to be weaving throughout their, their top priorities this year. And then there was a good discussion about the workforce needs for all aspects of health and human services. And he urged the council members who were present to please talk to the legislators about making sure that we have resources and that we're incentivizing people to go into those fields, because we have a great gap in the number of people who are available for those, for those jobs. So in terms of COVID-19, we are officially at a low transmission phase for the COVID pandemic, which is good news, much better position than we were in a year ago or two years ago. And the other virus that's been going around, monkeypox, he said is on a slow burn, and people are making an excellent effort to combat this virus. So that concludes my report, and I think they said that they're going to do this every month now?
I thought the frequency was slightly less. You did a fantastic summary. You know, they were doing them weekly during COVID, and now while COVID's still on the list, the list is pretty hefty on of itself, so I'm not really sure, but we can find that out. And thank you for sharing the slide deck. The one picture of the smog from the fires, I thought they, I thought it was one that they had adjusted for, this is what the future might look like. I didn't realize it was actually from that day. It's pretty horrifying.
Yeah, very scary.
Thank you. Deputy Council President?
Thank you. Two quick announcements. First and foremost, I know we're starting to head into some discussions about city facilities, so City Administrator Bob Kowitz wanted me to remind everyone that if you have any interest, it sounds like some of us have already done this, but if you have any interest in touring any city facilities before we have those discussions, while we're having those discussions, just reach out to him, and he'll find a time to schedule that. And then speaking of tours, Council President Walsh and I have an idea that we want to run by you guys. Based upon the city administrator's experience in previous cities, we think it would be a good idea to do a CIP tour to see the sites of a couple major projects here in Isicua together as a council. He has proposed, and we think is a good idea, at our next retreat, which is Saturday, May 6th, it'll be mostly be focusing on performance evaluation and our dashboard, and then also reviewing the community survey. He has proposed that the second half of that, we all get on a bus and go around and maybe go see what the pinch point really looks like on Smamish Road and how little right-of-way there is, or go see how few sidewalks there are on Squawk Mountain. The exact projects would still be determined, but essentially, we just wanted to float the idea, do we think it's a good idea? If you don't think it's a good idea or have any particular thoughts, just feel free to reach out to me. Otherwise, we're going to start working with the city administrator on making it happen. Thanks.
That's great. Are there any other, oh, Council Member Joe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know all of you got the email today announcing the SCA networking event in Renton on the 29th. If you're interested in going, I will be attending and happy to carpool if anybody, and I know the mayor probably will be in attendance. She regularly is there.
Thank you very much. Any other good of the order items? Okay. Some upcoming council meetings. Monday, March 13th is Committee of the Whole. The anticipated agenda items include Title 18 Land Use Code. This is the consolidated draft that was referred to. Also, City Hall Planning, the Space Needs Assessment results. And on Monday, March 20th, at the city council meeting, the anticipated agenda items include the first 2023-24 budget amendment, 2022-2023 budget reauthorizations, and emergency rental assistance. And I actually, I'm going to add one more item for good of the order. We are meeting on a Tuesday night, and we are meeting on a Tuesday night because we have adopted our Equity Board's Religious and Cultural Calendar, which means there are 12 days we used to hold city meetings that our community is saying it would be better if we could keep those nights free. So yesterday was a celebration in the Buddhist community, one of significant importance to those members of our community that participate. And so we are meeting on a Tuesday, and it's, we will, Tisha, the city clerk and I have talked about how to broadcast the why behind us changing to a Tuesday, since many of our community members really look forward to coming and seeing you all on a Monday. So anyway, just wanted to point that out. Last item on the agenda this evening is the executive session. The next item, this is our next item of business. The city council will now recess into executive session to discuss pending potential litigation per RCW 42.3, .110 per N1 per NI, and property acquisition per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NB. And these items are expected to take a total of 1 hour. I'm going to shorten it a little bit to give you 15 minutes for coming back into regular sessions. So we're anticipating going into executive session for 1 hour. Executive sessions are closed to the public, and we will now recess into executive session at 7:25 p.m. And I'll ask the city clerk to move the city council and any relevant staff into a separate session within this meeting. And anyone who is not a part of the closed session can remain in the meeting, and you are welcome to stay in the meeting until it is reconvened. So city clerk, let us know when we're ready. So City Clerk, let us know when we're ready.
Got a bead on it. Here we go. So we are back in open session at 8:27 PM. And is anybody prepared to make a motion? Council President.
I move to authorize the city attorney to execute all documents necessary for acquisition of portions of King County Parcel Number 202406-9074 and other property rights necessary for the construction of the 12th Avenue Northwest and SR 900/17th Avenue Northwest Improvement Project. An authorized payment of just compensation to the owner of such property, Tova Corporation, to be established based on the fair market value as determined through the appraisal process and other potential acquisition costs.
I second that motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, seven to no. That is our last item of business this evening, so there being no further business. The meeting is adjourned at 8:28 PM. Thank you.